Good evening and welcome to the Sugar Land City Council meeting for Tuesday, September the 28th. Item number one is public comment. It's almost going to be anybody sign up?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right, perfect. Let's go to item number two. Workshop, do a review of and discussion or recommendation for the city, city homeowner association maintenance responsibility task force. That's a mouthful. For updates to the streetscape policy, resolution number 2119, and the streetlight banner and flag interdepartmental policy. Eric Oskerson, Assistant Director of Public Works, and David Bristow, our citizen task force chair. Lucky you, David.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Tonight, as you say, it would be Mr. David Bristow, who's the citizen task force chair for this committee. We spent over two and a half years on this project. We started way back in 2017 and I'll let, we'll go over some of those details since some of you weren't on council at that time. We'll go through a quick background, what the project goals and scope were of this strategic project that was created back in 2019. We'll talk about, Mr. Bristow will talk about the task force representation and what their policies were and responsibilities. And then I'll come back in and we'll talk about what the recommendation was from the task force on the streetlight banner policy, and streetlight banner and flag policy, which is interdepartmental policy. And then also the right-of-way enhancement and maintenance policy, which used to be called the streetscape policy, and what the recommendations from the task force on that was, what the financial impacts to the city are for the changes to the policies, as well as next steps. So we started some of this back in 2017. So in 2017, it was my first year with the city. We actually updated the streetscape policy. We updated that policy because of annexation of Greatwood and New Territory. So some of the roadways that were included that we do landscape reimbursement for, we need to extend to Greatwood and New Territory. At that time, we decided to look at the policy in whole. We adjusted some landscape reimbursement rates at that time. We realized we were paying too much to the HOAs compared to what it was costing the city. So we adjusted those rates down. That did cause some concerns with the HOAs. After that, we also met with some of the HOAs regarding aesthetic bridge enhancements and maintenance of those enhancements. And so they wanted to address those through this policy. Then we had some other small items that we needed to address when it came to decorative pavement and some other things. So in 2018, we identified this as a need for a strategic project. And so in 2018, we created the strategic project. And that became the city HOA maintenance responsibilities task force, which became that long name project. So we identified that there was multiple policies and ordinances that impact the maintenance and beauty of the right-of-way. That was specifically the streetscape policy and then the streetlight banner and flag policy. And so this task force was created and this project was created to identify clarification between the city's responsibilities and HOAs or other entities' responsibilities. The project goals and scope was to recommit to the Sugar Land way. And that was to make sure we were maintaining our aging infrastructure, including right-of-ways, and also constantly improving the appearance of the community. We identified the need to engage the residents, hence we created the task force. And then we wanted to make sure we were providing equity and maintenance, so making sure that people in Telfair were getting similar benefits to people that might be in something like Barrington Park. And so we have the task force created and I'll let Mr. Bristow talk about the task force.
Welcome, David.
Fifteen residents of Sugar Land and there's two non-voting alternates. We managed to make it through the whole thing, only losing one member of the task force. He had to resign fairly late in the game. And so one of our alternates was appointed. And thanks to somebody here, I was appointed chair. And so it was a continual group, spirited discussions. I won't call them arguments, but spirited discussions and working to keep things on track. So a lot of people from a lot of different parts of Sugar Land with a lot of different views on what should be taken care of, what shouldn't be. The non-HOA members, you know, some from neighborhoods who don't have HOAs. They need services just like the HOAs can. So filled in some gaps there and a lot of discussions on changes to the existing streetscape policy. It's actually to create the document that you will have had a chance to look at. And so we started meeting in June of 19 and kept it going fairly regular basis. Bit of an interruption for COVID and then transferred to Zoom and we actually had quite productive meetings on Zoom. Some of it was so we could keep things focused a little better. And then we generally reached consensus on everything and had unanimous votes to confirm the documents that you're going to be judging.
So we're first going to go through the flag and banner policy. The flag and banner policy is an internal policy. It describes when, where, what banners we install throughout the city. Currently, we install banners along State Highway 6 and Eldridge. Those are the only two locations that we have banners. During the process, when we first started this strategic project, it was simply about streetscape. But this policy sunset during the time that we were working on the streetscape policy. And we felt it was a perfect opportunity to use the citizens to engage and get their opinions on where we should go with flags and banners throughout the city. So we moved it to this task force and this task force took on an extra assignment, which is above and beyond what they were supposed to do. So this policy, we identified a new purpose. It's to utilize streetlight banners and flags as a community building communication tool through the promotion of cultural arts and tourism and the celebration of seasons and holidays within the city of Sugar Land. And this then sets the standard for procedures where we place streetlight banners and flags at city-owned facilities and within the public right-of-way. Some of the updates. Previously, we had banners. If you've seen the banners, the banners are all 10 years old. They're faded. We haven't bought new ones in some time. What we needed, we talked about was needing to update them. They're from the 90s. You can tell they're from the 90s. Late 2000, you know, 2000, late 90s, early 2000s. And we needed a new design. And so what we determined was we needed a banner selection panel. And so what this includes is staff from economic development, communications and community engagement and public works, as well as two parks board members would be involved in the design and updating of the banners. The banner locations, instead of identifying specific streets, we have identified criteria to where these new banners could go. So not just on State Highway 6, not just on Eldridge, but this criteria, meaning we're at major collectors or adjacent to commercial industrial, not in residential areas. Anywhere there's current streetlight. Anywhere that might be like a regional activity center, around Constellation Field, around the ballpark. I mean, around Smart Financial Center and places like that. We also took a look at the schedule. So currently, we rotate the banners six times a year. The group thought maybe we need to lessen that a little bit. Maybe we don't have six different banners. Maybe we only have three. And maybe we switch those out three to five times. We do something around the winter holidays. We do something around the summer with Fourth of July and Memorial Day. And then we have a standard Sugar Land banner. They also thought it would be important that we had specialty banners in case we have a big event at, say, Constellation Field. We have Houston hosts the World Cup in a few years. How can we put specialty banners up? So we wanted some language in there that we could identify special banners to go up in certain locations or citywide if need be. And we identified them through like regional activity centers through the land use plan. So again, things like Constellation Field, Smart Financial Center, the Crown and Brezner Park are identified as regional activity centers through the land use plan. And so we identified those that can have specialty banners if there's big events. With regards to flags, the group recommended adding additional flags out west where we didn't have flags with new territory in Greatwood and also including areas up towards Imperial. So we keep them mostly on state highways, as you can tell. And then they also wanted to add Patriot's Day as a day that we put flags on. We currently didn't have that in the policy, and so they recommended adding Patriot's Day as a day that we put flags on. And those are really the major changes. So before I go past that, before I jump into the next policy, those are all the recommended changes from the group.
Any questions, any comments from council members on those?
At the end, we'll go through financialism, financial impacts. Obviously, we'll discuss how that impacts both policies. So the streetscape policy is now, the recommended name of the policy is right-of-way enhancement and maintenance policy. That was a recommendation from the group. This is a city council policy. It directs us and clarifies the responsibility of the city and third parties, including but not limited to HOAs, POAs, commercial associations with regards to and creating uniform standards for enhancements throughout the city. So one of the big parts of this is the roadway classification. We have four classifications. These classifications include Imperial, Highway 6, Signature and Classic. They didn't recommend any changes to those major roadways. They did recommend adding a non-classified route. That'd be residential roads or industrial roads that don't fall into those others. They wanted to make sure all roads were covered within the descriptions. Besides that, for roadway classification and standards, there was really no major change that they recommended at this time. They're very happy with how the city's been maintaining, the level of service we're providing on the right-of-ways and the level of service that the HOAs are providing on their roads as well. When it came to the reimbursement program, they recommended changing it from a landscape reimbursement program to a landscape supplemental funding program. This was tied to the fact that we are not reimbursing them for work that they were doing. We are supplementing them to keep the roadways at the standards that we would like them to maintain at. So that was a recommendation. We currently fund the landscape supplemental program at 8.8 cents per square foot. That was based on our last set of contracts that we've had. As you know, we've in-sourced right-of-way. One of the agreements we had was that we are going to adjust that 8.8 cents per square foot annually based on CPI for the next three years. And in three years' time, we're going to look at what the costs were for us from the insourcing side, what our price per square foot is, so that we can be equal. The streetlight reimbursement program is also included in this policy for any of the HOAs that own private lighting systems. The city reimburses them for their full cost. So the same amount of money that we would pay for our streetlights if we had them there, the tariff plus cost of electricity, we reimburse the HOAs for that. They had no major changes to the reimbursement, but they did want to add language to state that HOAs could use joint CIP funding if they wanted to convert their lights to center point lights or if they wanted to go from public lights. So if they had tall Cobra headlights and they wanted to make them decorative, that they could use joint CIP funding. So the pass that wasn't in there, they wanted to add that. It's an opportunity for HOAs to improve the lighting within their neighborhoods. Bridges and bumper crossings, this was a big, big area discussion. We spent multiple months on this conversation about this topic. Just a little background on this. This is kind of what we call standard bridge within the city. Is concrete safety walls, concrete decking, pretty standard. Nothing above and beyond. This is kind of the same bridge from underneath. And I'll go into some details. I don't want to bore you too much about the structural engineering side of it. But we also have these types of bridges within the city. We have decorative bridges that have brickwork, that have decorative railing, have decorative guardrails, have decorative pavement. All those things are located within these bridges, which is above and beyond what we consider a standard bridge. I mean, what we did was we discussed what was the standard that the city was going to maintain? What was the city going to maintain when it came to the structural components of a bridge? And we kind of came up with this, this kind of design. We talked about approach labs and all these different things that go into the structural component. When you drive across the bridge, what do we need to function so the bridge works? And these are types of things that we need to have work. The things like decorative arches, decorative pillars, those aren't structural. Those are just simply for looks. They're installed by the developer to enhance the community. And so one of the things that came out of the discussion was that the city will maintain structural and the minimal aesthetic standard components. The standard text that bridge, concrete walls, concrete barriers, and all the structural components that go into it. The other entities are required to maintain the upgraded aesthetics. So if there's brick fascia, that's on an HOA. Things like any kind of capital major improvements that need to be made to it, those things can be used for joint CIP. So if there's major improvements that need to be had, some of that structural aesthetic things are falling and they're going to spend significant dollars to fix those, they could use joint CIP. But all other things are considered maintenance. If they have to paint their decorative guardrails because they have decorative black guardrails, the HOA is responsible for the maintenance. The one part that was added was that the city will reimburse for cost for safety features. So if we have a situation where a decorative guardrail is damaged, right? Somebody runs into the decorative guardrail on, say, a Telfair Bridge, which is black, black powder coated decorative guardrail, there would be a cost. If that was a normal bridge, the city would repair with a standard guardrail. Well, we decided that if the city would reimburse the HOA the cost of what a standard guardrail would be, they would have to pay the cost above and beyond. Decorative pavement was another big area of conversation. Decorative pavement, when we see brick pavers or stamped concrete within the pavement. Again, these things were added as when the developers came through and built these roads. That's a, that's a feature that is above and beyond the standard of normal Sugar Land roads, concrete roads. And so we had a lot of discussion on how do we go about repairing those when those fail? Do we reach out to the HOA? And so it came back to this. If decorative pavement needs to be replaced, and with our pavement replacement program, we have a pretty good idea of what roads we're going to be fixing throughout the year, so we'll know ahead of time. If funding's available, that's the key part. If funding's available, the city will reach out to the entity. If funding is available, we'll reach out and we'll say, okay, we have funding to be able to make the repair. So we'll put the brick pavers back. If funding is not available, we reach out to the HOA or the other entity and say, are you interested in paying for the difference? Concrete, if for us to rip this out and put standard concrete back, it's X amount of dollars. But for us to put the brick pavers back, it's X plus something. And what we're asking for you to do is pay that something and we'll put your brick pavers back. Now, in some instances, we've had HOAs that say, nope, just rip it out, put concrete back. And that's what we've done. In other instances, we've had HOAs come back and say, yes, we want, don't put the pavers, how about stamped colored concrete? A little bit easier to maintain. And they've paid for the difference. And so now this is kind of set in stone with the policy. The other thing that got added was we're trying to be equitable so that other HOAs that don't have decorative pavement would also be able to take advantage of this. So if funding was available and say we were going into a HOA that did not have decorative pavement at their entrances, we would reach out to them and say, one, we have this funding available. We're interested in putting in a decorative feature on your entrance. Would you be interested? Or if funding's unavailable, we could still go to them and say, hey, we're going to replace the entrance. Are you interested in paying, you know, a part of that? And we can put in some decorative features. And that way, we're trying to be equitable across the organization for areas that might not have these types of features. We could add them as long as funding's available. Inset parking and construction was a couple of things. So there's been a lot of discussion about inset parking. Who's responsible for it because it's not in the driveline? The recommendation from the task force was the city is to maintain all inset parking unless that parking is required as part of a development agreement or any other type of written agreement. So in some cases, we have developments that come into town. They don't have enough space on their property to have enough parking, so they need to use inset parking to meet that standard. That would be a part of the agreement. They would be responsible for maintaining those. Now, if it was just added because that's part of the feature of the area, then it would be considered the city would maintain and the city would replace as needed.
So if it's part of the parking ratio, then they maintain it?
They maintain it, yeah. Because it's needed. If it wasn't there, they wouldn't meet the minimum standard.
Correct.
And so, and then any other, if there's any other agreement written throughout the...
But who gets to park there?
Now, that's enforcement. That's all part of, you know, if they're maintaining it and they're going to enforce it, then it would be something that they can enforce. If it's public, anybody can park there. So if you're looking at places that are, you know, along Imperial, I think this came up recently with Imperial, with the ballpark, all those spots along Imperial Boulevard are public parking spots. The city maintains those. There's no restriction on who can park there at that time. But that's a whole other parking enforcement thing. But this is about maintenance of the, this is about the maintenance of the spots. But so that's all due. And then the last thing we added, which actually came up a few years ago as well, is construction or repairs in the right-of-way. If the city comes in and does a capital project, the intent will be that we will replace what we damaged. So if we go in there to do a capital project and we rip out the private irrigation system from an HOA, we'll put it back. If we do damage or something, we'll put it back. And so we added language to improve that to make sure we take care of those things. Financial impacts. So that was the second policy. So all the financial impacts are based on future approved budget. You're not approving anything tonight. This is simply what we estimate the cost would be when we would come forward with a budget in the next fiscal year. The streetlight banner and flag program, we estimate for new banners for just State Highway 6 and Eldridge, all new banners with design would be about $25,000. If additional locations are identified, we'll have to talk about what that cost is. What roads are we doing? That's that committee that will kind of select what roads we're going for and put in budget requests. And if they're approved, then we'll add banners to those locations. When it comes to the enhancement and maintenance policy, there's really only two major impacts to budget. We're estimating, we talked about in the bridge policy, that if there's damage to bridges or things like that, we would reimburse to a certain extent. We estimate that could be up to $50,000. We don't think it will be, but that's what we estimate that the policy could impact. And then also with decorative pavement. As we identify areas that need brickwork redone and things like that, we estimate that to add that enhanced feature would be about $50,000 a year. So there's the two policies. So based on feedback from tonight, we had, of course, so the both policies were voted on by the task force. They were voted on unanimously. We took it to finance audit. We reviewed this with the finance audit committee back on August 5. We took this also to Parks Board and they recommended all the approval of the updates to the policy on August 10. And then next up, so after tonight, we're reviewing it with you. Based on feedback, the streetlight banner and flag policy, since it is an internal policy, will be routed internally. The right-of-way enhancement and maintenance policy will be presented to council at a future meeting, as well as a recognition to all the members of the citizen task force that spent the last two and a half years staring at my face, talking for hours on end and recognizing them as well. Move back.
Comments, concerns, anybody in council?
Thank you, David, for sharing this. We really appreciate your leadership on this. So Eric, so what's the, when the HOA has the decorative streetlights, you know, say they pay for the electricity and then the city reimburses them. I've been through HOAs a number of times at, you know, noon, 2:00, and all the lights are burning. And apparently, you know, they're, the light detection or whatever is off. So the city's paying in these areas for lights at, I said noon, you know, high noon. You don't need the lights. And so with them, this HOA is getting full reimbursement. There's a lot of big incentive from them to run out and spend money and fix whatever the, you know.
So we, so for the large scale...
How do you, yeah.
So we don't pay, they don't issue us a bill. We don't pay them by the bill. So we reimburse them based on what's called our dusted dawn lighting. So we have a, we have a standard rate that we get from JEXA and the standard tariff rate. So we pay them a standard rate. If their lights are burning all day, then their electrical bill's running. We are not reimbursing them for that. There's a standard rate and that's on that.
Okay, so they do have the incentive then?
Yeah, they do.
To do a timing matter because they are, that cost is on that. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I have a question. Can you go back to slide 101? The road enhancement maintenance policy. You mentioned some of the damage that was caused on the bridge. We would reimburse for those. Is some of that covered by insurance policies for the people who caused the damage or we aren't really responsible for all 50?
Yeah, and that's covered in the, there's language in the policy that discusses that, that we would be paying the difference, anything that they would be short. So if somebody hits it, you know, we find out a lot of times. People like to hit our bridges and we don't have police reports. We don't have anything. And so we find that often a lot. But if there are situations where that's being covered, then we would not be paying above and beyond. There would be no, it wasn't intended to be a financial benefit to the HOAs to make money from us by having it happen. That was not the intent.
You're my guy. David, thank you. That's your committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
You're good to go, Eric. Item number three, closed executive session. Three, a closed executive session is authorized by Chapter 551 Texas Government Code of laws, according to Section 55107. Four, public officers for the purpose of deliberation regarding appointments to and duties of the Building Standards Commission, Independent Ethics Review Board, planning and zoning commission, Sugar Land Forebears Corporation, zoning court of adjustment. Are we going to move here? Well, we will reset some of the council bottom line.
Right, but it's over?
Well, over the last week or so, I've had a great time with our team especially. Thorpe County Fair visit, been in Louisiana again, had a great time. And once again, the city of Sugar Land and the people here in our area are the ones that continually help our friends and neighbors in Louisiana, and I'm thankful for that.
Suzanne?
Oh, I, I was not thinking, is he? This is out with the fair. We, we had a great time at the fair and I think we all know, we came back with a goat. So I want to thank this entire group right at this table for, for helping save the life of a goat. Thank you so much. It meant a lot.
Your report. Ladies and gentlemen.
Your report, ma'am.
Jennifer.
Had a fabulous time at Smart Financial Center, sold out show. Alejandro Fernandez. It was, people were standing up and dancing, absolutely packed on the first night of the fair. I believe it.
Who were you?
Memorial Harmony Sugar Land.
Oh, very cool. Very good.
Cool, I got that in November.
Very nice, thanks for doing it. Carol?
Well, I'm going to Dr. Johnson.
Mike, I'm going to use my time of year, she manager report.
Well, Mary, this is the last meeting of our fiscal year. If you, if you remember going through the budget process last year and all the uncertainty and the work that the council did, the staff did on all the scenarios, we've had a, a great year. And so I want to thank y'all for all that and wish you a happy new year.
Happy New Year. Sugarland New Year.
Sugarland New Year, okay.
Many circle new members. I'll, I'll compliment most of you guys coming on to go through the budget process and participate like you guys did. It was pretty impressive. I mean, the council as a whole, I think, has really come together. I do want you guys on social media, my wife and I have a great time. And she shows me, well, where do you think they are? It's kind of like, where's Walt? The house is tonight. Well, no, it's the Thorpe County Fair. You can see his hands got a beer in her hands, Stur is doing this, Lou is doing that. So you should know as well, the Zimmerman household was hit with a great storm at your expense. It has been fun to watch everybody come together. You guys locked the door. I mean, everybody came together, everybody got the business done. I think staff did an extraordinary job of putting together the budget, like you and your team, Jennifer, I know she's, I think, on vacation right now, well deserved, but yeah.
Again, I'm going to.
Good leadership, mayor.
I'm going to send her.
Good leadership.
You got good members, you want to get it done. And we're in a churn.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
It's the same day.